Fire Department. It's nice to see you, sir. Please, um, please go ahead with your report.
Good evening, everyone. Hope you guys had a great day so far. Uh, my name is firefighter Kamu Marita. Um, I'll be giving you guys the incident statistics for March of two thousand and twenty four. So, starting off with fires, um, structures, we didn't have any this, uh, this month. For Wildland and Brush, we did have one, uh, the nuisance call, we had one, uh, zero cooking, and seven activated alarms with no fire. Um, as far as emergencies, we had fifty-four medical, no motor vehicle collision with pedestrians involved, two motor vehicle crash or collisions, one mountain rescue, zero ocean rescues, and one hazardous material incident. I'm gonna hand it over to my fellow mate right here, Pete Chu.
Good evening, everyone, uh, firefighter Pete. Uh, I'm gonna go over this month's safety tip and announcement. So our safety tip this month is evacuation planning. So have a emergency preparedness plan ready in case of an environmental emergency, fire, or natural disaster. Know two ways out of your home and then consider the route you will take if you need to evacuate your neighborhood due to an emergency. If there's anything else that you guys wanted to look up on that, you can go to fire.honolulu.gov to learn more. Um, we wanted to recommend that you leave early enough to avoid being caught in a fire, smoke, or road congestion. Make sure you establish a predetermined location such as a well-prepared neighbor or relative's house, a low-risk area or shelter evacuation center, and then take your emergency supply kit containing your family and also your pets' necessary items. Uh, with that being said, is there any questions for us?
Are there any questions from board? Go ahead, Paula. Uh, you're muted. Uh, just a second. It, it, okay, go ahead.
I was gonna ask, I was gonna ask.
Um, Paula, you're kind of, uh, going in and out. You wanna check your connection?
Here?
Yeah, just breaking up a little, but go ahead.
Better. My question to you folks is, and then we were told by.
Paula, Paula, um, your, your connection is, your audio is not really coming through. No, you're not coming through at all. Here, um, can we come back to you? Are there any, uh, other questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Okay, let's, let's try. Yeah, go ahead, Paula.
Talking damn, and what they were doing, um, according to Dos Santos. As far as you folks, about emergencies, because they talk about.
You're really not coming through, um. Uh, did you guys get that at all?
Um, unfortunately, we didn't. Is it possible that she could type out the question in that chat box and maybe we can take a look at it and get it back to you folks?
Chair Smith, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Is if Paula were to turn off her video camera.
That's a good idea. That's a great suggestion. You wanna do that, Paula, and then see if you're still muted, so you wanna see if you can turn back on your microphone? Okay, you're still showing up as muted. Um, what we can do is, uh, we can take down the question if, if maybe I do get a, an email report, if I could maybe email a follow-up. Would that be all right?
Yes, sir, that would be good.
Yeah, sorry about that. You know, tech problems happen every once in a while, but, uh, hearing no other questions, we'll let you go, but thank you very much for coming out this evening. We appreciate it. So stay safe and we appreciate you guys.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have the Honolulu Police Department. Uh, first off, we have District One. Do we have a representative from District One?
Hi, guys. Um, it's Lieutenant Hong from District Five. Sorry. So they should be joining us shortly. Let me, um, get my paperwork together real quick. Give me thirty seconds and I'll jump right back on.
Uh, no problem.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I hope we're not gonna have connection problems all evening. I assume that's, that was broken up for everybody, correct? Okay, so, can everybody hear? I mean, I'm hearing everybody else appropriately. Can everybody hear me fine?
Loud and clear.
All right, good, so must just be some, some connection problems with some people. Uh, do, I didn't catch the first part, so I take it, uh, that we do not have a representative from District One. I think he was mentioning that our District One rep would not be joining us. I took it from what he said very quickly. Well, let's just give him a moment to collect his, uh, paperwork. Sorry. Oh, go ahead, sir.
Sorry, we had the wrong link, so I tried to send it to the, um, District One rep. So hopefully they join us shortly.
Thank you.
Yeah. Regarding the sta-, um, Lieutenant Kiony Hong, representing District Five Kalihie. The stats for March two thousand and twenty-four. Burglaries, there was one, motor vehicle thefts, five, thefts, five, um, car break-ins, fourteen, the previous one was thirteen. Robberies, zero, aggravated assaults, two, um, sexual assaults, one, and simple assaults, three. Total calls for service was eight hundred and fifty-nine. I was gonna just go over quickly the, um, aggravated assaults, sex assault, and one of the simple assaults. So that, one of the aggravated assaults was attempted murder first. It occurred in the Liliha area on March tenth at about five-thirty in the morning. Says officers were sent to a building on North School Street in the area of Liliha, um, at a illegal game room. Approximately four male suspects uh, were exited a silver sedan which was parked on School Street near the sea. The first male suspect entered the game room where one of the victims observed the suspect to be in possession of a firearm. The victims were able to take the firearm from the suspect by striking him with a blunt object, causing facial injuries. As this was happening, the other sus- suspects attempted to gain entry into the game room and shot at the two victims, causing them to sustain gunshot wound. The suspects then fled into the silver sedan for leaky leaky on School Street. Then, there was an update on the twelve days later. It said, um, one of the suspects was arrested for a place-to-keep pistol revolver and his bail was set at fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, second suspect was also positively identified and arrested. That one, I think, didn't have a bail set at that time.
Yeah, doesn't matter.
The bail was set at five hundred thousand dollars because he was a felon in possession of a firearm. So that was one of the aggravated assaults. The second aggravated assault happened in the San Island area on the, that was March twelfth at about five AM. It says that friends were together. One friend was supposed to fix a laptop for the other. I guess they got into an argument at which time the victim was struck with a baton around his throat area. Um, he was then transported to another area where they released him. At that time, he called police to make the assault case. Um, both of the suspects involved in the assault was arrested. This one, it doesn't show their bail, but it was for felony assault. And then the sex assault. Sex assault in on March fourteenth. Uh, it appeared to, um, occur between homeless individuals. Female stated that a male inappropriately touched her, um, with compulsion. He was identified only by a first name and the case is still open at this time. And then the last simple assault that I was gonna highlight on was assault against a law enforcement officer. It's one of our guys. So on March fourteenth at around eight-twenty AM, officers arrived at Kukini Hospital to assist with the removal of a male from the property while the male was being detained. And in the process of being trespassed from the property, the male turned and swung at the officer, hitting the officer on the left side of his face, causing a minor scratch. Their male was arrested for assault on law enforcement officer and his bail was set at one thousand dollars. And that's all I have to share for tonight. If you have any other questions, I can answer them at this time.
Thank you. Uh, before we take any questions, why don't we, um, circle back and have Lieutenant Segusio, um, maybe get his report. That's okay, Lieutenant, and, and we'll kind of take the question. There's a lot of times the questions kind of blur, blur together anyway, so.
Okay.
Lieutenant, thank you.
Hey, good evening, you guys. Sorry I was late. Um, we were trying to, I was trying to figure out which, uh, site you guys were on. But, uh, I'm gonna just go right into the statistics, uh, for, uh, the District One side. So motor vehicle thefts for this month was, uh, this past month was six, previous to that was six, uh, burglaries was one, a previous month was one, thefts were six, uh, previous month was five, U M V car break-ins were down to three from the previous month. It was five assaults were two. Previous month was three, uh, six assaults were zero, the previous month was one. Uh, graffiti cases for both months were zero, and then drug offenses was zero for this month, uh, previous was one. So total calls for services are six hundred and two calls for service, uh, previous month to that was five forty-four. So the, uh, safety tip for the month of April is, uh, distracted driving, so it's a distracted driving month. So we're just asking our community members to be putting their cell phones down and to be more attentive when they're driving and, um, you know, attentive to their surroundings, yeah? You know, spring has arrived and there's more construction, more pedestrian, uh, traffic going on, so please drive with due care. Uh, other types of distractions are like eating and listening to loud music. Uh, so I just wanted to share with Paula, I don't know if she's on today. Uh, we're still continuing our speed and traffic enforcement on the Poly Highway. Uh, we, we're, we're trying to send officers out there, uh, to conduct, uh, speed enforcement with our new LiDAR, uh, radar guns. Uh, so I've also sent several officers to the training, so we're increasing the amount of officers, uh, on our shift anyway, uh, that can operate that LiDAR gun, so, um, we're gonna try to see if we can, um, bring, um, these speeders, uh, down. But we've seen a lot of, uh, uh, positive things, so there seems like the traffic is slowing down in that particular, especially in the northbound direction. Other than that, I'm gonna get back to rest of my time and then, um, myself and Lieutenant Hong can take some questions from the board and public attendees.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any questions from the board? And, uh, sorry, Paula, if, if, if your audio is working, you can, you can, uh, chime in. But anyway, please, are there any questions from the board? Uh, are there any questions? Yeah.
Lieutenant, we are still have that woman, homeless woman is still on our corner. Paul Road and Connie Ali.
Oh, oh, excuse me for a second. Um, Rachel, can you, uh, mute the, uh, local, your local mic? Because I think we're getting some feedback before, because of it. Sorry, Sylvia, please go ahead.
Oh, no problem. I said.
Yeah, so, so we've been checking, we've been checking the location and I spoke to Kelly, uh, personally. We're having officers go over there on a, on a regular, uh, to make sure, and I've seen her, I've seen her on several nights where she's by that, um, metal electrical box right there by the gray building. Uh, we've talked to her, we've tried to offer her some outreach. Sometimes it's a little bit difficult, but we'll, we'll continue to try. Um, is she causing an issue in the area at night and stuff like that? Anything in particular you want us to kind of take care of?
Well, sometimes she's at, she sits during the day at the bus stop on Paola Road and Palo Street, the very last bus stop on Paola Road. She's sitting on the bench at the bus stop. And so I don't know, because she's not there every day. She moves around. And, um, and you know, sometimes we see her in some other neighborhood beside ours. And it's really hard to see her because she's tiny and when she sleeps there, it's like, just like a, a bundle of blanket versus somebody sleeping there, if you've noticed.
Yeah, so we'll go ahead and, we'll go ahead and talk to her once again. Uh, we'll, we'll try to see if we can, uh, keep her moving. Uh, the one thing of concern with her is I just wanna make sure that she doesn't start to collect a lot of items, yeah? Uh, the times that we've, we've engaged with her and stuff like that, she had very little items. Um, just like you said, she had a blanket and stuff like that and, and a few bags, but it, you know, we just wanna make sure that there's no structures, uh, blocking the sidewalk. Uh, it's, you know, we're, we're kind of, we're, our, our hands are kind of tied because we offer outreach, but if she doesn't wanna take it, it's kind of difficult for us to, um.
What really bothers us? She, because I don't know what she does to do number two, but to do number one, she puts a cup in her pants. And then we see her emptying on, you know, um, in that little area where the grass is going be, by the curb. So we were kind of concerned about the health issue, you know? Basically, but, um, yeah, because we've witnessed that part.
And, yeah, we'll go back over there and we'll, we'll try to see if we can address it. I think she's.
But that's how she takes care of her number one business, but I don't know what she does for number two.
I think Booth Park. I think she goes up to the park during the daytime hours.
Oh.
We've seen her there.
Okay.
But we'll keep checking.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any other questions from the board? Paula, were you able to fix your, uh, computer issues? Okay, um, do we have any questions from the community for either District One or District Five? Hearing none, um, may I ask, uh, Lieutenant Segusio, I just, uh, heard the report from the lieutenant from District Five about the assault on the officer with a hundred, I mean, a thousand dollar bail. Do you consider that too low, in your opinion?
Okay, so in my opinion, obviously that is very too low. Um, if this person is willing to assault the law enforcement officer, uh, what do you think he's gonna do to a regular person, yeah? Uh, out on the streets, uh, and, and I was glad that, um, Lieutenant Hong had brought that up because we just had one last night. Uh, we had a harassment on PO or harassment on, uh, law enforcement officer occur where, uh, we're investigating an abuse case and, uh, the person attacked the officer. So, uh, it's becoming more prevalent. Um, we're asking our community members, you know, to vote well this November to vote well and, um, to see if we can, uh, get some change, get some more, uh, laws on the books uh, in regards to protecting us, yeah? You know, I, I get it, right? I mean, we, we joined this job, um, we gotta have a little bit thicker skin. But, um, just realize this though, if, if people are willing to hurt us, what will they do to the general public?
Thank you, sir. I, I, I totally agree. Uh, that was, yeah, that caught my attention, that was. But anyway, um, do we have any other further comments or questions for the officers? Lieutenant Segusio, Lieutenant Hong, thank you very much. We appreciate your service and you and all of your fellow officers, please stay safe and thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely. You guys have a great night.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have, uh, Neighborhood Security Watch with Paula. Paula, were you able to, uh, are you able to get online? Or, uh, communicate? Okay, I assume Paula is still having, uh, technical problems. Uh, she's usually very, very good and participatory. So we can move on. Maybe if Paula joins us, we'll circle back, but, uh, we'll just move on. So next up, we have Steven from Border Water Supply.
Hi there. Uh, good after, good evening, I should say. I'm Steven from Border Water Supply, Steven Norstrom, and so for the main break report for the month of March, there were no main breaks to report. We did have one break on April fourth. It was a six-inch break. This was near twenty-four oh four Paola Road. And our monthly announcement is to promote Detect a Leak Week, which is all this week, Sunday, April fourteenth through Saturday, April twentieth. And tomorrow, we're gonna have a big, fun, exciting event at Tammeran Park. That is from eleven-thirty AM to one PM. Right there at Tammeran Park Bishop Square in downtown Honolulu. We partner with Hardware Hawaii, so come on down. You can learn more of how to detect leaks and get them fixed to win some prizes and some swag. And you can find more information on our website at borderwatersupply.com slash D A L W. And the last meeting you had, Jimmy did bring, uh, me a couple of questions, so I do have a couple of follow-up, um, responses to those questions. One came from Audrey, member Audrey, who asked what the status is of the main break that occurred back in December of two thousand and twenty-three. This was on Wood Street and Alika Avenue. She was, um, bringing up about the white markings, and so the white markings usually indicate an area that will be paved. So final paving by our contractor can take anywhere from thirty to sixty days or longer, depending on the permitting process. But final paving on Wood Street at Alika was completed on February twenty-third of this year, and there should be no more, um, white markings on the road anymore. And then we did have an inquiry from, um, Board Member Paula. I hope she can hear this. She was, uh, asking about five hundred dollars worth of property damage from a main break, and she was wondering what the process is. Paula, if you can hear me, uh, the process is you can provide us, uh, free with your email. We can follow up with our Claims Office, or you can, uh, call eight oh eight seven four eight five zero four one or email contact us at HBWS.org. I'll put it in the chat and we can follow up with our Claims Office. And those were the, uh, responses to the inquiries that, uh, we received the last one. And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have any? Um, I'm sorry, Audrey, uh, Paula, go ahead, please.
I'm so sorry, my, whatever, everything in the world went down. Um, and I don't know. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, uh, yes, we did have five hundred dollars worth of damage. Yes, we did, um, apply to the Border Water Supply. And yes, they said no, we had to pay for it through our own home insurance.
Okay, well, if you follow up with our Claims Office and that's what they told you, then that would be the because what they usually do is they'll take the claim, they'll research the claim, and then they'll provide you with a response whether we will provide you with the claim information or whether we'll deny the claim. So if you work with our Claims Office, um, that would be the response.
Yeah, I wanna save a baloney, baloney, and love chunk since we've had so many um, breaks over here on Alika and on Wood. And, uh, it's not fair to the residents that have to put up with that.
Understood. We do have that project, as you guys are aware of. We do have a, our Puiva Road and our Dalset Avenue project that hopefully should be starting soon. We are currently waiting for approvals from the State Preservation Historic Division. There has been a delay in getting permit approvals with them. It's totally on DLNR's, um, State Historic Preservation Division, so as soon as we get approvals, we can start the notice to proceed and begin the project. We have, I know some of the questions that have come up were regarding pipe materials. The pipe materials have arrived, but we are just waiting on permitting approvals right now. That's what's.
Okay, my, my question is then, does that include Alika and Wood? Because you're talking Dalset.
Dalset, Puiva, there is, um, a section along Old Polly Road which will include an eight-inch, I believe it was an eight-inch pipe, something like that, and a fire hydrant.
That's not us. That's not. Yeah, I'm talking Wood and Alika.
Alika is included in the project, Wood and Dalset, all those three areas. I can, uh, provide you with, uh, more information regarding the streets, but it's, uh, what sections of those streets, but yes, it does include Puiva, Wood, Alika, part of Dalset, and then there's a part of Old Polly Road.
Thank you. And then my next question to you at Border Water Supply is, what is our danger now with the dam? Because we were told in January to get ready because they were cleaning the dam. And I wanna know, what is that, what is that entailing now? Because I don't, I don't wanna have to run down the highway and, uh, take my dog with me in a cage.
Of course, what, what dam are you referring to?
Again.
Which dam was that that you're referring to?
Four.
Dam number four.
Dam four.
Yeah, I will.
Yes, number four.
I will follow up and provide, and have Jimmy provide you a response for next month regarding Dam Four.
I hope so, because we're supposed to get fourteen days whatevers on that and, um, I wanna make sure that I'm safe and my family's safe.
Of course, no, if there is any danger, of course, we would let you know, but, um, again, I will follow up and provide you with a response to that question.
And Mr. Chair, I will not be showing my face because I don't know what happened to my everything. You won't see my beauty tonight, so I give up.
No, that's.
I'm not, I'm a TT, a terrible tech, sorry.
No worries.
But I did comb my hair.
Thank you.
Um, and I don't know what else I missed, Pat. Um, did I miss the Police Department?
Yeah, but let me, let's circle back to that. Hold on, um, let, let's complete the Border Water Supply because Audrey's been waiting patiently. So once we do that.
Yeah, I'm just gonna leave my, I'm just gonna leave mine on, so you'll hear me, but, um, I won't say a word.
Thank you. Go ahead, Audrey.
Uh, that's all right. Uh, he answered my question about shipty, so I'll wait another month for another update. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other questions from the board? All right, do you have any questions from the community? Uh, hearing none, I have a concern, um, that I'd like to pass on, and this is, I, I don't know the address, uh, specifically, but it's by two twenty-four Pacific Heights, because there's a bus stop right there, and when, uh, Pacific Heights was, there was, the pipe was, I guess, replaced going up to the water station, um, a number of years ago. I don't know how long ago. It, it seems like it's been a few years. But there were some concerns of people at that, well, I, I, I guess you're not probably familiar with it off the top of your head, but there's a little loop there. Um, just, just up, up the hill, you know, down the hill from that, uh, area that, uh, when the Border Water Supply was repaving, we got a lot of rain and some asphalt ran off. Um, in one section, the Border Waters, or the contractors created a parking space, but in the other section, it, it was very bumpy and everything, but it's, it's really changed the dynamics of water runoff. So when there are significant rains, some of the water is coming directly into the, into neighbors' yards that are downhill of the road. Uh, secondly, as a result, purportedly of, of that repaving or the repaving that, the material they put out, the drains themselves had a lot of sediment in it, and of course, I guess it dried. And so the drains themselves are not really, um, taking the stormwater drainage as it should be. So I'm, I'm wondering if, and I know it's, it's been a while since that work's been done, but that just came to my attention, uh, if there's some way that the Border Water Supply could look at that and.
For sure. What, what was the address again? It was, you said, is it Pacific Heights?
Yes, it's two tw- uh, it's twenty-four forty-one is the bus stop, and it's just a little uphill of that. There's a turn there.
Okay, that's two four four one Pacific Heights Drive? Is that the name of the road? I'm sorry.
Yes, that's right, Pacific Heights Drive. And like I said, there was a water, uh, main, or I, I don't know if it's a water main, but a water pipe, uh, that went all the way up the hill, so the water Border Water Supply took like two or three feet off the road the whole way up, and so when you know, they, they did the pave, repaving, that's when some issues came, so, yeah.
Yeah, I can, I'll follow up for you.
Thanks, sir.
Of course.
So is there anything further? Hearing nothing, thank you very much. We appreciate you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Pat, we had a question for Steven.
Oh, yes, please, go ahead.
Hey, Steven, um, we're at, we're at twenty-four oh four Paola Road. And, um, they just installed, uh, new fire hydrant in, right in front of the house, um. And I was talking story with the, the, I guess, the crew that was putting it in, and they said, um, they're just getting the neighborhood up to code so that there's, there's hydrants every two hundred fifty feet.
Right.
But, um, uh, I mean, there's one, there's already a pre-existing hydrant twenty-six yards down Ma'Kai of that, this new one. And then there's another one, two houses up, that's like twenty-nine yards away, so that's like both under a hundred feet. I was just wondering why we needed a, a third one in the span of, you know, hundred fifty feet.
Yeah, well, I can follow. I think there's, there's certain codes when we're putting new hydrants, and sorry, my dogs are barking at me. Um, but there's a certain codes that they need to put in, but I'll, I'll follow up. What was the address on that again?
Twenty-four oh four Paola.
Twenty-four oh four Paola. Yeah, I'll follow up, sir, and I'll get back to you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the community or anyone? Thank you very much for your report. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're go back to Paula for her Neighborhood Security Watch. Sorry, you did miss, you missed the police report. And I believe officer, the officers are no longer here, but I'm not positive. So Paula, if you wanna give your report now.
Uh, certainly. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I had to check first, sorry. Um, I wanted to thank, uh, Segusio, Lieutenant Segusio, for everything he's done. And in, uh, February, he had seventeen situations for the Poly Highway, which I see in the notes. And I wanted to thank him for being a push on that to try to get things calmed down. Um, now I tried to ask him for District, for our District, is it? Um, now I tried to ask him for district, for our district, is it the Poly Highway District One for the police or is it five? And I missed both of them. So I don't know who's doing the citations, if it's District One or District Five.
I think it's District One. Sylvia, do you?
Okay.
I'm not sure. Anyway.
Okay, if it's District One, I want to thank him. Uh, for District Five, we went to the meeting at Moana Loa School, and everyone should have gone after District Five people. Because the police are telling us of all the problems they have, including the e-bike and the bad things that are having with the e-bike with the kids. And I was wondering for both Districts One and Five, if they could look and trace what's going on in the Poly Highway with the whirlies, derlies, and all the things that are speeding, and it's ending up in Waimeaalo, which would be another district. If they could kind of case it out and say, this is this district, this is this district, and this is this district, the way they're racing and looking at the speeding in Waimeaalo and what's coming on on the Poly. There is nothing that has been recorded on that. If you put the districts together, I think it would help to give a better sign. The other part of it, I didn't see in the notes, and I was very disappointed about the person being hit at the Queen Emma Summer Palace right in front. There is nothing in the notes to indicate that we were asking about that for February. And I still don't know what happened, and I was going to ask the Fire Department if they knew anything. But that person, we still don't know who it was and why they were hit, if they were in the crosswalk or if they were on the sidewalk, because the pole at Queen Emma is down. Um, those were really two important things for me. For District Five, I want to say they held a really good meeting, and all of you should have been there because you can hear all the problems, and they're the same problem over and over and over. And I'm thinking it's like a puzzle. If you put it from one district to the next, and I'm repeating myself, you can maybe push it out and say, hey, this is the puzzle. This is where we got to put all our efforts in. We're stopped there speeding on the Poly, which is out of control now, very much out of control. Um, as far as I'm concerned, for the Police Department for District Five, we should be giving them a lot of credit. I did give lays out that said, who loves your baby? And a lot of people don't know what who loves your baby mean. That's Telly Savalas from the nineteen nineties movie. Cogit. So everybody doesn't know what that means. They think that something else was going on in the thing, and they cut us off as far as. But Who Loves Your Baby is very famous, and you got to tell the police how good they are, even though they don't have enough people. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board or any follow-ups, comments to the Neighborhood Security Watch? Uh, any follow-ups or questions from the community?
Can I man, for our Neighborhood Security Watch?
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. Can you repeat that?
Can I, can I do my Neighborhood Security Watch?
Oh, I thought that was your report. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, no, no. As far as our Neighborhood Security Watch is concerned, we are looking specifically at your crimes. And if anybody wants to join, they have to call and be interviewed to join our group. Because our group is very special as to who are being joined and who's being educated. And if we're looking at all the things and even Neighborhood Board, we need to look at all the Es, education, the environment, engineering, economy, on what you're buying for your house and how you're going to do it. And enough, enough crime. So everybody put down their, all their Es. You might be able to put some more in there. But I'm telling you, you guys better wake up because there's lots going on. Thank you.
Thank you. With, with that report, are there any questions from anyone for the Paula, for the Neighborhood Security Watch? Sorry. Hearing none, we'll move on, but thank you very much, Paula. We appreciate your report. Next. Okay, next up, we have the filling of vacancies. There are two vacancies in the Punch Bowl District. If anyone lives in a vicinity of Punch Bowl, we can qualify you if you're interested. Is there anybody interested in filling those positions and either of those positions? Hearing none, we can move on. Next off, next up, we have our report from our other board, our other boards. And first off, we have Ray G. with MPO.
So Ray G. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I just wanted to let you know that the statewide transportation improvement plan for twenty twenty-five the year to twenty twenty-eight is soliciting comments from everyone. So I know they, I mentioned earlier that there were a few projects on the Poly Highway and Vineyard Boulevard, which is Vineyard is out of our district. But the document is like three hundred pages, and if you want to take the time to go through it, go, go ahead and look. It lists all the projects. So you can, you can do a search like what I do, and I could show you real quick if you don't mind me sharing screen share.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, let's give it a try. I'm trying to start it right now. Sorry, let's see. Can you see screen one? Oh, not yet. Can you see screen one?
Uh, yes.
Okay, sorry, I'm going to move it. Move it towards me. Oh, did I accidentally close it?
Yes, yes.
Oh, gosh. Okay, never mind. Forget the screen share. In the chat, I put the link. And in our agenda comment form, I'm saying on, on chair, um, on our chairs, public, what is it called? Meeting materials that's on our agenda, the Neighborhood Board Agenda. There's a link and the comment form is in there. And there's also a link for the PDF, which is the statewide transportation improvement plan. It's due on May seventeen, twenty twenty-four. And what I'm going to do is share, show you what it looks like. And what it does is it lists, there's various sections, and it lists all the projects. So you can do a search or look at the table of contents, and it's divided into groups. And for every project, like it'll say, um, Poly Highway Lighting Project. And it might have a figure like two hundred thousand for this, this time of the year or this, these few years. And it might say zero. And if it says zero, don't be worried about it. Because if there's extra money, that's, these are federal funds, and if they're not spent, then they will move the funds to that project and spend it. So if you don't mind taking the time, now's your chance to comment on all the projects. So just take a look on our, again, our meeting materials on the agenda. You can click on that link and you'll see the comment form. It's a blank form with all these squares. You can put the project number. I know Paula wanted to comment about the rockfall, rockslide areas. And I mentioned earlier at a meeting that her area was not listed on that project. So you can, Paula can go on to that report, write down the number and the title in the comment form and say that, you know, you're, you're covering Kailua-bound portion of Poly Highway. I want you to cover more towards Ahhi Place or something. So now's your chance to give comments. It's due on May seventeenth, and that's it for my report tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any follow-up questions from anybody? Um, I would say that, you know, sometimes these reports, when they're three hundred pages, seem really overwhelming. But when I looked at the, I think, the Metropolitan Planning Commission, uh, you can, you can hone in to the areas that you're, as Ray mentioned, you can hone in to the areas that, that are interested or that, you know, were applied to you, such as, you know, New Wano area. And so I would not let three hundred pages, you know, sort of intimidate you. Really, it's a really good thing to go look. And, you know, it actually does. I don't know if the comments make a huge deal, but at the end of the day, at least you're knowledgeable. And in that respect, you can make a contribution. Ray G., thank you very much for your report, and that's good work over there. Thank you. The next, oh, yes, yes, please, Sylvia. Go ahead.
Oh. I just wanted to say, Ray, thank you very much. I've been on this board for so many years. That's the best Opa report I have heard. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry the screen share didn't work. I was going to show it to you. Want to take a look at the maps? Please take a look at that report.
Thank you. And it is in the chat as Reggie mentioned. So please take a look. Uh, if there's nothing further, we'll move on to the Papakalea Community Updates. And Adrian? Did I, Adrian? Maybe I caught her unaware. Uh, we can, we can circle back to that if Adrian comes back. Now we can, next, we have our resident and community concerns. Are there any community concerns anyone would like to bring up at this time? Hearing none, we'll move up, we'll move on to our elected officials' reports. First up, we have the Mayor's Representative Director, Kim Ashiro. Is Director Ashiro on?
Hi, Patrick, I'm here.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, so I'm going to insert a link into the chat for the Mayor's Newsletter, just some highlights. The mayor delivered the twenty twenty-four State of the City Address at Mission Memorial a few weeks ago. Uh, he has also started town hall meetings for this year. We've had four so far. And the next two are actually in the town area. So tomorrow night at six thirty, we'll be at the Blaisdell Center Peekake Room. And the Thursday after that, April twenty-fifth, also at six thirty, will be at the Manoa District Park Gym. So hopefully, anyone interested will come out and join us. I've been going to each of the town halls, and we hear a lot of community concerns and also some, some good ideas. So it's been very effective. Um, also, the city signed an agreement with the Department of Health to open up a behavioral health crisis hub in Iwile. The Ra'huan Band moved into a new home at the Waikiki Vista. And it also includes important traffic updates for residents in the Lani Kai area. Uh, the next announcement is that the Neighborhood Commission Office is hiring Neighborhood Board Assistants to engage in public awareness for community support. Neighborhood assistants help coordinate with Neighborhood Board Chairs and produce written reports to members of the public. If you're interested or know of anyone who's interested, please send a resume to nco@Honolulu.gov or call the NCO office at eight oh eight seven six eight three seven one zero. Okay, moving on to departmental issues follow-up. So there was a question brought up two meetings ago, or actually in February. Has the water runoff penalty and charges to homeowners been implemented? This is where the water cannot seep back into property. Uh, DFM responded that based on the information provided, they would need some follow-up to be able to answer the question more specifically. So they're asking if we could get clarification if the penalty in question is in reference to penalties or fines assessed for pollutant discharges from properties into the city's drainage system? Or if the charges are in reference to the stormwater fee associated with a stormwater utility? I don't know if someone could clarify that for us. I'm not sure if the community member is on tonight that brought this up.
I, I, I don't recall. Is it someone on that did bring this up as an issue? I, I, I don't know. So I guess if they join us next month, we can, clarification at that point. If not, it is what it is.
Okay, that's fine. So moving on to the next question. So a request was submitted by Paula to have someone walk across the Poly Highway to see how dangerous it is. Um, dangerous it is due to the timing of the lights being too short. And she mentioned sometimes residents have to catch a taxi to St. Francis for doctor's appointments, and it costs about thirteen dollars for one way, which is expensive. So DTS responded that they did check, and we did report back last October, uh, that the pedestrian timing has not changed. And they did check the pedestrian crossing time along Palae Highway between Jack Lane and Wa'akanaka Street and found that the time was set appropriately. During the field check, DTS did observe the majority of the pedestrians were following pedestrian signals. However, a small number who started crossing when the hand was flashing could not complete the crossing before the signal changed. DTS wants to remind everyone, a pedestrian should start to cross the street only when the white walkman appears as it is safe to cross. Once the white walkman turns into a blinking red hand, you cannot continue to cross, and you should definitely not start to cross or enter the crosswalk. Because someone would not have sufficient time to cross the street safely. And when the solid red hand is displayed, no one should start to cross the street. Um, also, as a follow-up, I did ask if DTS would accompany me, and I did cross Poly Highway at, at two locations. One was at Wood Street, where there is no light. And I just wanted to experience what it was like to, to have cars stop for you in both directions. And luckily, it was, it was about the middle of the day, and we did have cars stop. Um, I did have a DTS staff person with me who was wearing a safety vest. I was not. And so we did, you know, have courteous drivers. Um, but what I did as a follow-up was email the DOT Director at Sniffin to see what could be done on Poly Highway. Um, so some, there are already a number of speed humps installed, and so my question to him was, could additional speed humps be installed or could a blinking crossing light be installed in certain areas on Poly? So he said that he would have his department look into that, and I will provide updates once I receive information. And then the last question that was brought up by Pat. Tyra was requesting improved communication when bus routes are altered due to closures on Poly Highway. Residents need to know in advance when changes occur. During the last shutdown, she was unable to find information on the website or the apps on the night before. Is there a direct link or instructions on how to locate the notices in the apps? So DTS responded that information about road closures or other incidents impacting the bus service is located online, and I'll insert the link in the chat or by calling the Transit Information Office at eight four eight five 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 and pressing number two. So this number is answered daily from five thirty AM to ten PM. DTS also notes that Oahu Transit Services, which operates the bus, is in the process of revising their website to make it easier for riders to find information when bus service is modified or disrupted. Navigation to find service disruption information within apps will vary. In general, selecting a bus stop to view its service disruption information is recommended. And the description of any applicable service disruption will be displayed in the information pane that contains scheduled real-time departures. And that concludes my report. I'm open and here for any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the board? Mike?
Hi, I had, we received a report from a resident up on Pacific Heights Road that there are two very large trees overhanging the road. Um, and this resident was interested in uh, seeing if it was possible to get those trees significantly cut back. And I can give you the address if you would like. And I can give you the address if you would like.
Okay, what is the address? Go ahead, please.
The address that the resident gave were, were 2424 and 2502 Pacific Heights Road. And they said there are possibly banyan trees or ficus trees, not sure.
Okay. I'll report that.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, if I could just follow up. It, it, you know, the trees look like they're not dying, but during heavy winds, they creak really loudly and threateningly. So it might be a situation like if, if the city has, I'm sure they have an arborist or something that can make an evaluation of the health of the tree. So thank you. Thank you, Mike. Are there any other questions or concerns from the board? Any questions or concerns from the community?
I have questions.
Please go ahead, Paula.
Um, I wanted, since you're with the city and county, and I get all confused between DOT and then telling DTS what to do. If you're gonna be putting more bumps on the Poli Highway, that doesn't work. And you've heard that from February meeting where they did 17 citations by people just coming north up to Poli. And if Mr. Sniffen wants to put in more bumps, he's gonna make more noise in the neighborhood. Because we're already having all the noise from the things being bumped and pushed around. And that, and besides that speeding, continuous racing all the way from down below the first viaduct, all the way, all the way up the top. You wakes you up every night with all the speeding that's going on. So go keep on putting in more bumps and no lights. And we asked for a light four years ago for Wood Street so the people could cross safely. And half of these people here, we have to use a cab to go down to St. Francis to catch another bus for $12 by taxi. So the whole thing multiplied together with all the problems. He not gonna solve nothing by putting in more bumps. He already got houses cracking from it like they did on Kalanioli Highway where the houses were all cracking. And if he thinks he's gonna slow anybody down on those bumps, he is missing. I would like to talk to him straight out, face to face. Listening to all that going on at night is too much. And so I had a list of 25 things I wanted to say about the Poli Highway and about the disabled in the area and who's doing what. Now I missed Ms. G, Mrs. G's, Ray G's thing about what the projects are on the Poli. But I hope they're not gonna forget because speeding, you try to walk across the street. You can't even get across for the 14 seconds or whatever it is to cross. For the seniors even, and the kids, that it is dangerous over here. And if they don't get it yet, I don't know. You go wait for somebody else gets slaughtered. You have people getting killed. So I want, I want some kind of plan or what are you folks gonna do as far as the Poli Highway? Then the people that are on the other part of the board, I apologize to them for going on and on and on about the Poli Highway. And everybody else is kind of quiet over in Pa'ohoa. And here we are still arguing about what we're gonna do on the Poli Highway. What are they gonna do? What is the legislature gonna do? And if people don't talk to each other and know and come over here and walk like you did, thank God for you to go walking. That in the middle of the day is yes, is not bad. But you try at six o'clock in the morning with no light at Wood Street and going across with people almost getting killed. We don't need that anymore. I'm tired of it already. And I don't know what our board can do already. And I don't know what they're gonna do for the disabled on the Poli Highway. We live in a community. And now we've got people using the streets over here to use for businesses, and they're renting it out to railcars on the Henry Street. Not one house, but two houses, bringing in 15 cars on the streets and all that. So who can look at this whole community and, and sort out each problem? There's so many problems. So I apologize to the rest of the board because I, I, I really think you've got your hands full with all my grumbles and my concerns. Thank you.
So Paula, I, I wanted you to know that, that I did ask Ed Sniffen about some kind of light. I've asked him before about an extension of the light. I've asked DTS that also. There's a concern there regarding how it impacts traffic. And I know what you're gonna say. I know what you're gonna say.
Paula, let us finish, please.
Yeah, so that has also been relayed. But I did also ask Ed about, you know, some kind of blinking light or something for Wood Street. And I did cross that, that particular area because I know there's no light. And I know there's a bus stop, right, on the other side of the street? Because I crossed from the Diamond Head side over to the bus stop. And then I walked down to Country Club Road and crossed the other way with the light. So I'm making that clear to him, right? I understand you've been waiting and you've been bringing this up for years. I will continue to follow up with him. And just to clarify the difference between DOT at the state and the city DTS is that DOT, because it's Poli Highway and it's a state highway, that is under the state.
Correct, I understand that.
Well, what DTS does, what DTS does is they take the direction from DOT in terms of how to program the lights. If, you know, there's any changes that need to be made. So they're really, DTS is really the implementer. And DOT really has authority to make changes there. So that is why I'm going to Ed Sniffen. So as I stated, I will do my best to continue to follow up with him and report back to the board what he says, you know? And, and I will do my best to represent the community. I understand the concerns and having walked the area. And yes, I didn't go at 6:00 a.m. or 6:00 p.m. But I can imagine just from the experience during the middle of the day, how much, you know, worse it is and, and how much more dangerous it, it would be to residents. So I will follow up.
Yes, we had one person almost hit yesterday crossing six lanes to get to the bus. Yes, yesterday. And I got tears in my eyes thinking about all this because these, these are all my friends, you know? We've already had two killed out there, eight total already, not just at Wood. But then the, the lights that I got when I was Neighborhood Board Chair at Jack's, Jack Street, Jack Avenue, whatever you call that. We had those lights and everything. And DOT for that thing took all those lights and gave them out to Leeward. We lost those lights at Jack. So then they had to get in an agency called FACE, F-A-C-E, and they went in and they got lights. So I don't know what you need kind of power to get somebody to listen to us. And Laime was the same thing going on, yes. So I can't go to any more funerals, I tell you that right now.
Okay.
I'm broken up already.
Paula, maybe what I might suggest is, is seriously, if you, you know, kind of write this all up. Might be.
And written that many times already.
Well, okay.
Legislature.
Okay.
They turn us down every time. Even Carl Rhodes tried. We couldn't get anything. Nobody thinks it's serious. And now we don't have a bus. So now we don't have a bus. I wonder if I can get my bus money back because I can't even cross the Poli Highway. I want my money back that I paid.
Okay, well, thank you. So Director, if, whatever you can do.
And I apologize to you for getting so upset, but this is too much. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's okay, I understand. Patrick, can I just follow up on one, one additional thing? So I know that the, the car rental business has come up multiple times also, and DPP has sent out inspectors to that area on Henry Street and has not seen what, what residents are seeing. So I'm not sure.
2606 Henry.
Yeah, and we've gone there before and they haven't seen what is being observed by those in the, the area. So I don't know, you know, I can put in a request to have them continue to go out. I think it's been a while since that came up.
Yes.
So I can go ahead and do that.
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. I know Jill that, that you're waiting, but, but Sylvia has had her hand up first. So Sylvia, please.
Okay, I got two comments to me. Thank you very much, Kim, for your report. And I just wanted to tell you that, and I'm so sorry that I did not put down the date and the time of the day, but it was the number six bus. I wanted to commend that bus driver. You know, we have our, there's a big span between bus stops on Pa'ohoa Road. One is the one at the Connie Alihi Pa'ohoa Road intersection right by the Catholic Church. And then there's, the next stop will be right above the Credit Union on Pa'ohoa Road, just past the cemetery. And, you know, I was following the bus one day. And the bus driver stopped right before the, right by the curb at the cemetery. And he was letting off this person in a wheelchair that had caught the bus and was, you know, needed to get off. And it would have been a really difficult, you know, push for the person to get between where they needed to go because the stop was, you know, they were needed to get off in the middle of between the two bus stops. And he stopped and he let them off and helped, helped that person. And I thought that was really, really nice of him. You know, not to just go to the next stop and too bad, you know? But he helped that woman. And so when he stopped at the next stop, and, and I said to him, thank you very much for doing what you did, you know? That was really nice. But he turned around and he thanked me and said, thank you very much for being patient and not bypassing the, the bus. So I, I needed to tell you, but I'm sorry that I didn't get the, it was the number six bus, the date and the time, then we would have known who was the driver. But that was really good. And regarding Paula's complaint, I had attended some community meeting in another area. And they praised Mr. Sniffen for the job that he was doing for their community. And I went, how come we don't get that treatment from, from him? But other districts are getting their projects done by him. So I don't know what it is that we did that he does not like us. So, okay, but that's my two cents and that, those are my comments.
Thank you. Director, did you have any follow up? If not, we're going to Jill.
Hi, thank you so much for listening to all of our complaints. But like Paula has says, I understand her frustration. This has really been quite ongoing. I want to let you know that because I work remotely from home, I wa, I drive back and forth each time all the way off of Henry Street. And I can tell you honestly, Kim, that there's no way possible that anybody has come out and not seen what is happening on that street. Eighty percent of the cars on that street are rental cars. They vacuum their cars with the doors open so that we can't even drive by. This morning when I left, they made a U-turn blocking off all of Laime with two people waiting to pick the cars up off of the street. It is an everyday incident that we have to deal with. And it's the most obvious thing that you could ever possibly see that nobody in, that came out to inspect would be able to see that they haven't seen anything. There's Jeeps over there. Now I feel like they've moved in or even rented a second property in that neighborhood. I haven't had the time to kind of investigate. But there is rental cars up and down that entire street, and they're not operating legally because someone that went to go ask them if they would rent said that they needed a cash deposit and that you couldn't pay online. So that's where our frustration is, is I was not even gonna say anything because I just felt like it's not gonna get taken care of. But since Paula has always been our, kind of our mouth and tells everybody like it is, I do feel like I really do continue to.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Like I said earlier, I will put in another request to DPP. And if it is that obvious, you know, they have reported several times that they've gone out to inspect and not seen any activity like that. So I, I don't, I'm not sure why.
I mean, I'm more than happy to meet them if they want someone that can actually meet and point things out so that the obvious can be pointed out. I'm more than happy to. But there are so many transients in our neighborhood just picking up these cars that it's, it's ongoing running business completely.
Okay, um, Joe, I think that would help if you're willing to meet someone from DPP. So would you be able to, um, maybe in the chat, you can just send me a direct message with your contact info?
Will do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pat? Pat here.
Hi. Same neighborhood, so I can't.
Pat, unfortunately, your audio is, is kind of breaking up. Can you try again? I, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Pat, your, your audio is, is not working appropriately. Yeah, sorry, sorry, it's, it's just not working, so. I apologize. Not much we can do. Are there any other questions or concerns or comments for the mayor's representative? I'm sorry, I have one last thing, Director. That is, at the, and I think I erased it, at 2471 Pacific Heights, come, it's coming down the hill. If you would have asked DTS to maybe make an evaluation if there's a speed bump that's needed. And like I said, that's only downhill. I personally, I live up the hill. I don't really think it's needed, but some of the neighbors are concerned that there's a very tight corner there. And people do come a little fast. So maybe if, if, if DTS could just make a determination. And like I said, that's, I think it's 2471 is the cross street and it's downhill, Pacific Heights Road. Thank you very much. With that, thank, thank you, thank you for your time this evening. We appreciate all your, your great input. Thank you. And especially your going out there and actually crossing the street. So that's very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Councilmember, I think Lisa Leonardo from Councilmember Pabro De Santos's office. So Lisa.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, can you hear? Okay.
Okay, yeah.
All right, so I'm gonna go over a couple of things that have been around since, I believe, February. I actually was not able to attend in February, so I'm taking this from Lynn, our Constituent Services Director. The first part is concerns from constituents with requests that were sent to the city departments, but we have not had a current update, but just letting you know that we still have this on our list. So the first is a request regarding a new large home construction at 157 Ragsdale Place. Our next request was to DOT to trim the overgrown grass at the Wiley Street Onramp to Poli Highway Townbound. At the Wiley Street on ramp to Pully Highway townbound. And then the last request. Uh, is to repair broken sprinkler heads at Booth Park. So those are the three where we put a request in and we do not have a current update, so we'll bring bring that back to the next meeting. The next are concerns from constituents with requests sent to city departments and response has been received. So we did have a request to remove fer- feral chickens from Booth Park. And the response we received on February twenty-second. Was the Department of Customer Services have forwarded the mentioned area to sandwich is is pest solutions for awareness and action. Uh, we had a request to repair broken sprinkler head near the parking lot entrance at Booth Park. Um. And the constituent sprinkler has been flagged for repair for some time and shoots water in the air, causing flooding. So this issue was investigated by Section One Maintenance Supervisor of the West Honolulu District. On March eighth and the repair to the irrigation was done on that same day. And then the last thing that I just wanted to bring up, um. Uh. For those of you who have been following, Councilmember Dos Santos Tam has put in bills fifty-seven and fifty-eight regarding game rooms. They were heard in the zoning committee on April third and April fourth, but they were deferred. And I just, he just wants to thank everybody who has been supporting. For these two bills and we're just asking that you continue to support um. Uh, so and at this time, that's all that I have to report, so if there are any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? And I see Mason's hand up already. Please, Mason. Uh, Mason. Mason.
I have a question.
Um, Paula, hold on just one second, please. Mason, you're.
Okay, I can't tell if I'm on or off, sorry.
Okay, no worries. I'll call you. Go ahead, Mason.
Okay.
Uh, Mason, you're not, you're not coming through. I'm not sure why we're having all these audio difficulties. Mason, can you try again? It shows your uh mic is working, but we're not hearing any audio. Okay, Paula, go ahead and and we'll see uh if Mason can come on board. So Paula, go ahead, please.
I wanted to thank Lisa Leonardo and Kim Hashiro. For the things that you're doing as far as the chickens are concerned. And I was doing research because Ray G brought it up at the end of our last meeting. And I really did a lot of research on it and then. I'm wondering, why aren't the chickens being used as pest control? Uh, out in the areas where we have red fire ants. I know they don't eat the coconut coconut bugs, but. Why can't they be used as a pest control for red fire ants, although the red fire ants can get on them too, but. Use them in a c- circle of um fencing and areas where it is really red fire ant area. Cause they eat those bugs. And you don't have to bring in extra bugs or extra pests or extra whatever's to kill whatever you're trying to kill. Um, because they really do help to clean up all the bugs, the beetles and the centipedes too also. Thank you.
Thank you. We're ta- um. I'm sure she can take that as a suggestion back to.
I can do that.
Ever. Thank you.
That's a suggestion.
Thank you. Um, Ray G, did you want to follow that up or I saw you remove your hand?
Oh, I just wanted to mention that I did ask. Um, cause I work at the State Department of Agriculture and they did say that the red fire ants are on top of trees above. But I know chickens can fly too and and eat on top of the tree, but that might be a logistics thing. Yeah, anyway, just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Uh, are there uh any other board members who have any questions, comments or concerns? Uh, are, is there anybody from the community that would like to bring something up? Hearing none, I.
Oh, Patrick, we have one.
Yes, please.
If you come up here.
Well, um, I can actually bring one up really quickly and that is uh. There was a monster home at twenty-seven sixty-one Pacific Heights Road. And a number of people in my neighborhood, to my understanding, but it did include myself reached out to uh the council member's office. Um, regarding some um grading work that's appears to be uh. Being done at that location when after their permit has been pulled. Or rejected and we reached out to the councilman's office and. We really haven't heard anything back, so that's. Twenty-seven sixty-one Pacific Heights Road. And uh, yeah, if you would follow up on that, I'd really appreciate it because um.
Yes.
Yeah, we we haven't heard really much, so thank you. Uh, so please, whoever is, can you identify yourself uh and state your concern or question?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for recognizing me. My name's Kalana Lee. I live right next to Booth Park. Um. Talking about the feral chickens um and that complaint that was submitted. Uh, I live there now close to two and a half years and we went from a few chickens to now an entire herd. Where it has become a problem where they're flying inside of people's yards. Uh, the four houses that are immediately around me, they have nested underneath the homes. And now you have baby chicks um hatching pretty much on a three-month cycle. Constantly through this park, the population is just out of control at this point. And I'm just, thank you for pushing this through, but how can this be done faster um for us? Because it's become a danger to the to our pets um essentially, right? Uh, there are a lot of dogs inside of our area. Uh, these dogs walk up and down and they are just going ballistic. Because there are so many chickens running everywhere, so I'll defer to you, Lisa.
Yeah, we will um. Keep working the departments to see uh. What we can do, timeline is also. Thank you for giving us that information.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Mason, did did you resolve your issues? Do you want to try again? Uh, I'm sorry, Mason, it, yeah, it's not coming across. Okay. Well, then you you've muted yourself, but um. I- i- if you uh. If you want to type something in the chat, we can uh Lisa, if maybe you would look.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you very much. So without, is there anything further from anybody or the community or any of the board members in the community? That would follow up with the council member's representative? If not, thank you very much, Lisa, for coming out tonight, and if you'd follow up on that, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have Governor Green's representative. And that was William at one point.
Yes, hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Hi, so I'm on William's team. He's unavailable today, so all of you are stuck with me, so sorry. But earlier in the meeting, I sent the link to the governor's newsletter for April. And it, he opens with an update on Maui's recovery process. I don't know if all of you knew, but I didn't, but April is Tsunami Awareness Month, so there's some tips in there as well. And then at the end of the newsletter, there's a survey that you can take on well-being, whether it be in your home, the state workforce, or just the community as a whole. So I do recommend that you all check it out, but with that said, I'm happy to take down any questions and track down answers for you all.
Thank you. Are there any uh questions or comments or concerns from the board members? Where the governors are up. From anybody? Well, this is a very easy evening. Thank you very much for coming out to tonight and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So next up on the agenda, we have. Senator Carl Rhodes and I know Peyton from his office is gonna give the report, so please go ahead, Peyton.
So Senator Senator Rose has a letter, uh, two letters actually, one directly to this meeting and one as a response that'll be covered. So I'll just read through. Uh, first, in an update for on the feral pig problem, he sent a letter to the coun- to Councilmember uh Tyler Dos Santos. And the Department of Land and Natural Resources requesting that they work with the Pig Hunters Association to allow access to state land. Where the association feels it's necessary to control the populations of feral pigs. Um, next, the city and county of Honolulu Department of Parks and Recreation and the Nuanu YMCA. Are planning to conduct various improvements to the city's Kamau Maalu Neighborhood Park. DPR in partnership with YMCA proposes to build a new comfort station. Install new security lighting and improve landscape and drainage and a minimum of one hundred and four new parking stalls. The comfort station will include male and female restrooms with ADA accessibility, two sinks and utility chase area for maintenance staff. If you have any questions or comments, please email Pete Elonis at G seventy design. I can type that in the chat when I finish reading. By April twenty-two twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. While I realize it's not uh in your board area, I believe many residents from your board area do use the park. Or would if uh or or would use the park if it was in a nicer condition. That's why I've included this uh this message. Anyway, uh, third message. Senator Rose received a letter from the Department of Transportation Services in response to his letter to them asking if they reinstated bus route one-two-one. Uh, DTS stated that Route one-two-one was discontinued in August of twenty-twenty-three due to a marginal and infrequent ridership in the upper Nuanu Valley area. The bus service is regularly monitored by a service review committee and the service review committee's evaluation of one-two-one. Found that the bus service in upper Nuanu Valley was very underutilized. Performance data and field assessments in indicated marginal and infrequent ridership in this neighborhood. With the majority of ridership concentrated in lower Nuanu downtown Alapai Transit Centers. Where duplicate service was available via Route four. That'll be in the next point. Um, this is a COVID update. Last week, the Department of Health reported a hundred and forty-two new cases of COVID. With a seven-day average of nineteen cases and no deaths for that weekly period. Senator Roger, Senator Rose encourages everyone to stay up to date on their COVID shots as well as their flu shots. If you're over the age of sixty, there's also a vaccine for respiratory syncytial virus, which is the second highest respiratory infection. Um, causing issues and and popping up in health reports. Right after COVID. Um, first and moving on to the next issue. Senator Rose received numerous complaints regarding feral chickens. Uh, as he said in the past, he's using some of his legislative funds to have them removed. Uh, if you have any hotspots, please let us know and I will take a note to the office and we can concentrate our efforts there. And moving on to our last point. Uh, it's the letter that I'm. That's attached at the end um regarding the National Museum of Asian Pacific American History and Culture. Uh, which we hope to establish in the national, on the National Mall alongside Smithsonian Museum of Institutions. So if you'd like, I can read that letter as well. It's about um page and a half or I can attach.
If if you could maybe just summarize it very quickly, thank you.
Uh, I actually haven't had a chance to read through this letter, so I can't summarize, but.
Okay, well, you can attach if you would.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
Um. Then I have nothing further to add. If anyone has any questions or I would like me to relay any information to the senator at this time, I can do that.
Yeah, yeah, if, I mean, you.
I have a question.
You've heard about, hold on, Paula, uh, just a second, but I heard you've um. You probably heard about Booth Park. I think Booth Park has for quite a while been. A very problematic source for feral chickens, so if you pass that on to the senator, thank you. Paula, go ahead.
I wanna know, how come we have so many chickens over there? Are someone catching them and leaving them loose like they're doing in New Uwano, number one? Number two, I wanna know what you're doing about the Hawaiian duck. Because we've got Hawaiian ducks in our area. The actual brown Hawaiian duck, which is becoming extinct. Which is going with the mallard duck. We've got more and more and more ducks um to look at the two different ducks. They were killing them in Kailua, the mallards, so they wouldn't interbreed with the regular brown duck. And so what is the state doing to safeguard these brown Hawaiian ducks? And where we last one month, three months ago, we lost eleven on the streets from speeding. So I'm wondering, since I'm talking about chickens, also they got hit. Um, what are, what are they doing about some of these ducks to save them from eat, from being eaten um? Done away with forever. Because they're only found here in one other place, I think in China. And I think Ray G might know where they come from and what they're doing, but they are our Hawaiian ducks. And if they are, the mallards are being killed, what do we do as citizens? Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you can ask the senator, follow up. Um. Are there any other uh questions, comments or concerns from the board members? Any from the community? Uh, hearing none, uh Peyton, thank you very much and uh pass on our regards to the senator and we hope hope to see him soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have Representative Takaduchi. Representative.
Hi, everybody. Good to see everyone online. Okay, um, just some updates for ongoing things first. Um, first Paula's question about using New Uwano Elementary School as a hurricane shelter. Um, so we finally got some more definitive detailed information. Um. Department of Emergency Management um looked into it again and then they've advised that, yes, um, you know, New Uwano Elementary. Was considered in the past, but they no longer consider it to be a, no longer, it's not considered suitable for a shelter space anymore. Um, the main reason they cited is that since the school, um, you you guys know it's like kind of down from the um reservoir. So because it's in in a a dam evacuation zone and an active flood zone, they're not going to consider that. Um, and also because y- you know, it. There are no plans to harden it to for hurricane either. Um, they're advising that the nearest shelter um after New Uwano is going to be down at Kaulavella Elementary School um or Roosevelt High School. Um, then the children's crossing signs for the for um Wood Street leading up to New Uwano, oh, not Wood Street, sorry, uh Park Street. Um, leading up to New Uwano Elementary School. Um, DTS is looking and considering putting the in-street children crossing signs. At Puiva Road and Puiva Lane, Dowsett Avenue, Alika Avenue and at Alika Avenue and the Wood Street intersection. So as soon as we get um confirmation about those items, there's those locations, they're surveying for the additional signage, um, I'll let you guys know. Um, New Uwano Stream Vegetation near the Puiva Bridge, um, the Department of Facility Maintenance reported that. The crews um cut back the veggies, the vegetation on both sides of the bridge. Um. And the issue with the New Uwano Congressional Church um tree cutting um near uh Jill and Terry's place. Um, Dylan R. Did go down to the church property um and they were investigating to see if a stream channel alteration permit was necessary. Um, because of the work that was being done and the concerns about, you know, changing the stream bed. Um. The Water Resource Management Branch um sent a hydrologist to inspect the work that was being done there. Um, but unfortunately, they did not find that it was impacting the flow of the stream enough, so the permit was not necessary. Um, I know there was interest in getting a copy of the report. Um, I did request that from the department. I haven't received that yet. Um, but I will be um sharing additional updates with the board and uh with um the EASLs directly when I do get that. Um, for the issue up on Owaya Lima Street, um Adrian, Megan, uh if Kupun is on. Um, I did speak directly with um, as you know, uh, just to recap quickly, I've been trying to find a state department to kind of take on this work. Um, to kind of rebuild that little um. To the the crossing over the the ditch so the kids can get to Paul Elementary School. Department of Transportation Director at Sniffin was um open to bringing a team down. I'm hoping to reach out to you guys separately to maybe find a date and take you guys with us to do a site visit. Um, to see if we can use some safe routes to schools funding to kind of get that built since it's a um, seeing that is is um. A lot of the kids who are using it directly to get to the schools, so hoping to get that um settled. We're kind of in the middle of conference, so maybe in the next couple of weeks or so, maybe we can all go down together with DOT and look at the site and um. Talk about what might be possible with the safe routes to schools money. Um. And just a couple updates, um, the Department of Transportation is also gonna be um. So Polly Highway in the townbound lanes, the Paul Road off-ramp is going to be closed for two nights um this week. Um, Thursday, April eighteenth and Friday, April nineteenth, um, both days between seven PM and five AM. They're gonna be doing some guard rail work and like post-fate um improvements to kind of um bring that off-ramp up to federal standards. Um, also, the Hawaii Public Library system um is sharing that a lot of their um branches have gotten new equipment for faster checkout of books. And check-in of books to get that back into circulation. Um, this was from a three million dollar appropriation the legislature did. Um, so it's a new system where their uh their new system and the way they tag the books, yet they're able to actually. Um, this was from a three million dollar appropriation the legislature did. Um, so it's a new system where their uh their new system and the way they tag the books, yet they're able to actually instead of like scanning them one by one, they can like grab a whole bunch and their system will like read five, six books at a time to kind of help the processes at the libraries. Um. You know, for checkout, um, I think there's some self-checkout in certain libraries also to just kind of help user experience and then same way for checking the books back in. They can do big batches at a time to hopefully get um people their list in circulation a little quicker. Um, those are other updates. Um, happy to take any questions or um anything new that needs follow up.
Thank you. Uh, questions on the board? So Sylvia. Sylvia, are you muted?
Okay, yeah. Um, Jenna.
Hey.
Thank you so much because. Your staff member called me to interview me and asked me what my concerns were in our community. So thank you very much. I really bent her ear.
Oh, okay. They'll be updated soon. Um, yeah, uh, everybody, I do have, we're we're calling through the district of all the phone numbers we have just to check in and see if anyone just wants to share, so. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, that's great. Uh, Mike.
Hi Joe, can you include me on the uh the school path uh visit to?
Oh, sure.
Paul Elementary, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other questions or concerns from the board? Uh, Joe, please.
Hi, I just want to, I just want to really thank you for following up, even though. Um, we're not happy with the report said. He even stated that they should cut all the trees on the stream. I want to thank you for your hard work and um your staff member Calvin was absolutely wonderful. He kept checking in. He was actually very concerned, so thank you so much for everything and we look forward to getting the report from you.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, thanks for that comment. I'll I'll let him know. Okay. Kelton did a lot of follow-up too, so we tracked down the deal and our guy for me.
I know Kelton was great. He was very amazing. If he could have come out himself, I think he would have. So thank you.
Yeah, he's great.
Hello?
Okay, Paula, go ahead. Sorry, Joe.
Hi, I don't know if I'm on or if I'm off, sorry. I want to thank you also for everything you're doing. I I can't believe below Puiva uh Puiva Bridge that they took out all those trees and everything below that too. Uh, if they did, that's great. But I've also heard from people down below and I heard it again today. That because they're D L N R or whoever it is is cutting trees along the stream. Now we can hear the Poly Highway racing. And so I don't know how they're gonna put all back down on the trees because even city and county has cut at my house seven eucalyptus trees. Cause one fell down, but there is no way to stop all this noise in New Uwano. And the more you cut, the more you do and the more damage you're going to be doing. So I think somebody might want to look at as an arborist at some of these things that they're doing along the streams because maybe we need to plant streams, uh plant uh plant trees, I'm sorry, not streams. Plant trees along there to bring the noise down in the valley and it is really bad at night. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Joe, would you like to follow up?
Yes, I just want to say one last is that in arborist did come out. And they did the exact opposite of what the report was from that guy from the DLNR. They literally stated that only certain branches should be cut. It will one hundred percent impact the stream. Impact, so you know, I think it's really important for everybody to just get on the same page. That's all we're asking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, are there any uh last concerns from anybody or the representative? Hearing none, uh, thank you very much Jenna. We appreciate you coming out tonight.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Call them at any time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh. Next up, do we have any other elected officials that we have not heard from that wish to be heard from? Hearing none, uh, we'll move on to board business. Um. At this time, if if our board members can put on the video, I know Paula, you probably shouldn't because of your audio issues, but if there are others that can, please do. Um. So first up on the agenda, we have the continuing concern of the spectrum uh residential property that was used, generator noise, as I recall. Uh, is there anybody that wishes to speak on that? Okay. Hearing none, uh, potential monster home in Pacific Heights. I actually brought the issue up with the council member. I, as far as I know, that there's another one. Is there anybody that would like to comment on that? Hearing none, we can move on quickly again, and that is traffic safety issues across the Poly Highway. Uh, I see Terry Easley, would you like to speak to that? See your hand up. Uh, you're muted if if you're trying to speak. Uh, sorry, we 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 can't hear you. Um, I I do think we we've discussed that issue quite a bit, not not to diminish the importance. It's actually very important, but we have. I had a lot of talk on that. So without anything further, we'll move on to our approval of hopeful approval of the February twenty fourth. I mean, uh, February twentieth, two thousand twenty four meeting. Does anyone have any corrections they wish to offer?
I do.
Yeah, please go ahead.
I want to say on um the front page where they're talking about. Um. Uh. District one. And they did do this thing about the citations, but they did not bring up the fact that a person was hit on the Poly Highway at Queen Emma in a van. And. I don't even know what happened after that because there's nothing recorded. And the police department, we're going to check on it. Thank you.
Um.
I don't know who does the minutes, so I'm sorry.
We're probably responsible to add something in, so pedestrian incident occurred. Sometime in February?
Yes, uh, it's not on here. I see uh Rachel and I can't remeet, let's see. Linda and I guess they were, um, Crystal was at the meeting, but. Um, that one at the Poly. And Queen Emma is really important. If there was a hit on the sidewalk, I want to know. Thank you.
Okay, so Queen Emma and Polly. Okay, well, I can ask that they make a correction to, but there is a pedestrian. Uh. Yeah, pedestrian incident on the on Quinn Emma and Polly in February. Is that fine?
Yeah, that's how I gave the date. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I, yeah, I don't have it right now, so, okay, I'll 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 add that as a correction. Are there any other corrections? All right, hearing none, um. With that correction, uh, are there any? Any opposed to accepting it or adopting it as distributed with this correction? Hearing no opposition, then we will have it adopted. Uh, next on the agenda. Our announcements, are there any particular, any uh anybody have any other business they wish to bring up at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to our announcements. Uh, we did, we did talk about the mayor's town halls. There are a couple left. One is uh tomorrow at six thirty. And I believe next Thursday at Manoa. The uh Director Ashira brought that up. Um. There is, and and it's I put it in here, and there is a health survey that UH is putting out and they really just want people to participate. It's it's a good thing, so if you can take that, that would be great. Uh, I took it, it's not too long. Uh. I'm I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time reading this. I have a lush light. Oh, yeah, so there's a note on here about um having our broadcast rescheduled and the information's on here. So our next meeting will be May twenty first. And that is it. Are there are one last thing and that is the Oa. P A O, I guess PAL Baseball League. Is having a registration signups at Booth Park. On April eighteenth, nineteenth and then twenty second and twenty third. You can uh reach out to. I think this is Lester. At eight oh eight. Four seven nine four six nine eight. So if anybody is interested and if you didn't get that number, just give me it, just drop me an email, but that's for baseball. And I don't know what age age limit or level that is, but. Please think about it. Anyway, are there any?
Mister Chair?
Yes.
Mister Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I don't even know if I am on. Okay, I want to make sure that people know that our next rerun. Is the first Thursday of the month at six PM. And. I want everybody to know that that's really a bad time for a lot of people that are having um. The children home to feed the kids and all that, for them to even watch for area. And I'm wondering if there's another time they could give us instead of six PM at night. Uh, especially when you got small kids and we want everybody to know and be educated. There's my E. Educate on what's going on in the valley. Thank you.
Okay, I guess we would have to follow up with the Neighborhood Commission to liaison with Alelo. I'm not really sure, so, okay. Anyway, are.
If you need help, you can just call me.
Thank you. Is there anything further? Uh, I keep seeing a hand from Terry Easley, but uh I I don't hear any comments. Do you have something?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead, please.
I'm sorry to take you back a little ways in this meeting, but sitting here listening to a few things, I'd like to make a few comments. First of all, the chickens were mentioned. Years ago. If we had started doing it then, we wouldn't need a mass killing of them or a mass uh group of people to go out and spend a lot of city money to do it now if we keep it up. Another thing is the trees that were reached, taken down from the stream when the DLNR came out. Two people came out and this gentleman said. Removing trees by the river does not in any way. Deter the wa- uh change the water flow. Or or having trees there does not help it to not flood. I mean, I don't have a college education in that, but all the research I did before we made this complaint. Said that any trees that are moved by a river that have been there for a hundred or so more years. Will cause the river to change its flow, yes. Because all of the big stumps will eventually deteriorate. And where will the water go straight through instead of moving from side to side? No one seems to hear anything we're saying in the beginning until you become a squeaky wheel. Only the squeaky wheels get heard. So if if I became a squeaky wheel, I would get my my problems heard and solved. However, there are so many people that complain about things that don't matter, so when it does matter, nobody hears. So that's why we decided that we're just gonna let you know, in my age now, I think, okay, I'm just not going to complain. And my children, my grandchildren will have to grow up in a in a city that doesn't hear. And and doesn't help their constituents at all. But I do want to help like thank Jenna. She's been really following up on a lot of things and the other. Um, the other. Politicians that do try and do all the same. I just needed to say this because I sit and listen every meeting. To things over and over and over again, and I don't know how in my age if I'll even make the next meeting, but thanks for listening, everybody.
Well, we try to get things done, but thank you. Uh, is there anything further? Hearing nothing further, uh.
No.
I will adjourn the meeting and we will see each other next month. Thank you so much to everybody. Um, Rachel, can you? Try to save the chat? If you can, that would be something great if we could post. Um. Post on our web uh or drive, Google Drive or whatever it is. If possible.
Yeah, I can um. Uh, email you and see what you want to do with that.
Well, if it's easy, I would assume it's pretty easy. If you email it, I'll just, I'll post it myself, but, okay. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.